... the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
We did put a request in to turn the heat down, but... A roll call. Secretary Pickett?
All members are present with the exception of member halls.
That will... The approval of the agenda, it will... The agenda will stand as presented?
Well, I would like to make a motion to the agenda. I move that we discuss the bullying task force and the current... The current status of the bullying task force on tonight's agenda as a discussion item.
Support that. It's been moved and supported to add an agenda item to discuss a bullying task force? Is that what...
The bullying task force.
The bullying task force. I do have an update of where we are in the district.
Are we going to... But what I'm asking for is to make it an agenda item so we can have a full board discussion?
I would appreciate that as well, actually, if we did have it as an agenda item. That way, we could thoroughly talk about it as a board, and I know a number of board members have been very active in the community and involved in speaking about this bullying issue with many parents. So I think the community would really probably... Would really likely appreciate an update of where we stand and what our experiences have been over the past few weeks.
Any other comments? All those in favor of adding the agenda item on the bullying task force? Opposed? Motion passes. Slide to one. We will put that on information item under seven... It'd be 7F.
Okay. And I thank you for that. And I also have another motion. I'd like to motion that we discuss... I'd like to move that we discuss the preschool programs and the decision... And the decision-making process for cutting programs on tonight's agenda. And again, have it be a discussion item and have it be where we talk about it.
I'd support that. So there's a motion. I'm not clear. The motion is to discuss preschool?
Preschool programs and the decision-making process for cutting programs.
Well, okay. I will say that, you know, I... As a board president, I do set the agenda. I try to take everybody's concerns into play when we set an agenda, and I'm not sure why we can... Why we get requests to add agenda items at 6:05?
Well, I looked at Robert's Rules of Order, and it's something that I can do. And I've asked to have agenda items on the agendas before, and I've just been told no. So I'm doing it now, and this is following procedure. So we'll take a vote and decide if it goes on the agenda or not.
I'll take a comment.
I will add that there was a... There was an addition to the agenda today at 3 o'clock, I believe it was, about 2:30 or 3:00. So this is not something that is unprecedented. It was something that I did not become aware of until about 5 o'clock today. So her asking tonight, in my opinion, is pretty in line with what was done earlier today with adding board member ethics to the agenda today.
And with Robert's Rules of Order, it's completely in line with that.
Certainly. I just disagree with adding another agenda item. I think that can be postponed until the next meeting.
I think, too, for a lot of us know that there was a lot of interaction back and forth, a lot of social media posting. There was people up in arms. We... Board members were involved. Superintendent was involved. Administration was involved. And so I don't think it's a bad thing to have it in the discussion, be transparent. A lot of people here might have known about it. It's a discussion. We talk about it, how it went down, how it turned out, and then we move on. It's not a voting issue. It's more of an information to discuss what happened, how it happened, why it happened, the outcome, and we move forward.
Right. I will comment that the item I added at earliest afternoon required no staff assistance. It only is information coming from me to the board. Preschool or preschool cuts or cuts in general, I think would require impact or information from our staff, and I'm not really sure it's fair that we ask our staff at the same time we're presenting. So I'm going to vote against adding that item to the agenda.
You did have... Our superintendent was directly involved, and he could weigh in?
Yeah. Just if I may. Yeah, this was, again, another issue this past week that a number of people in the community reached out to board members about. The superintendent was very actively involved very recently, and I know every board member was informed of that.
She was so...
I'm not asking... Or I don't think Mary's asking for... And I would support her motion for anything other than just a review of what occurred and what the outcome was and what is our process, which I think we're all versed... Pretty well versed on now, including our superintendent, for cutting early childhood programs.
Well, the whole discussion is, what are we versed on? When a building principal makes staffing changes to adjust to her population, what's that?
Well, that's going to be the discussion that we'd like to bring up.
Yeah, that's... Okay.
We'll talk about that.
Sure.
That's what I'm hoping for.
I'm just saying that I'm against it. So all those in favor? I'm sorry, Jim.
I just want to add... I just want to add also, I'm concerned that we're putting our administration in a position where we don't have the right people or the right information that is being looked for. A typical information item, we would have already discussed, and we would make sure we have the right people with the right information and the right detail. So I recognize that we want to get an update, and I'm wondering if... Dr. Wonderlick, if you might be willing in your superintendent comments as an alternative to provide an update on the... On what transpired so that we have that information made public.
I don't see the difference. I mean, when we're asking to add it to the agenda, it's going to be simply an overview of what occurred over the past week and what the process is.
Okay. I understand that you have a concern if you guys want to hear it. The issue right now is, are we even going to put it on the agenda? So all those in favor?
Well, we're given... I think we're giving reasons why we don't feel it's a bad idea. I think you talked about, are the right people here? I know Mr. Holbrook is here. He met very early on in the process, you know, three weeks ago, very early on. Again, Dr. Wonderlick was very involved and helped expedite a solution or a compromise. So as far as not having the right people here, I think the right people are here. You know, the board members, our superintendent, administration, and the community.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion fails 3-3. With that, we move...
No. Excuse me. I have another motion, Mr. President. I would like to motion that we discuss our April 26 study session regarding the budget and its location of the meeting, and will it be taped?
There's a motion to put on the agenda for information on our April 26 study session. Got to get that clear, correct?
Yes. And will it be taped? Where it will be and will it be taped?
We're not voting on tape, and we're just voting on putting it on the agenda, though, correct?
Yeah. We'll have a discussion if it's... Where it will be and if it will be taped.
Any comments on that agenda item?
I think, again, I don't think anything wrong with it. It's allowing board members to put their two cents in to give their opinions on why it should be, why it shouldn't be. You know, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but at least gives the opportunity for conversation. We have a lot of people here in the audience. I just don't think it's bad to have some dialogue as to why one might think it should be videotaped so the entire community can hear and why others feel it should not be videotaped.
Mr. Torres?
I agree. We have the community here. We have administration here. We have board members here. I think it would be helpful and insightful to have a conversation about whether we should be taping all of our meetings that we have here in this district.
Any other comments? I think that it can be solved without putting an agenda item. I don't intend to approve this one... Vote for this one either, but all those in favor? Opposed? Motion fails 3-3.
Okay. I also have another motion. I've asked in the past, and it did not... You did not respond to me about it, so I'm asking now, so we'll take a vote on it. I'd like to move that we discuss our bylaw and policy violations and discuss changes we need to do immediately to remedy them.
It's been moved into... Moved and seconded to discuss specific bylaw violations?
Yes. I've outlined them in great detail in two different meetings, and asked at the end of each of those presentations that we add it to the agenda the next week, and it has not been done. So I'm asking to make... I'm making a motion now to discuss...
The complete set of bylaws?
Nope. The bylaw violations that we are doing and discuss changing... Discuss a remedy so we can not be in violation anymore.
I appreciate what you're asking. I'm just trying to narrow down so we all understand what we're going to put on the agenda to discuss.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have numbers of the violations, the policy numbers, or...
Yeah. I have them all here. Specifically, well, I mean, there's specifically the one about hiring and the $7 million of blue book spending that does not come for approval in front of the board.
It actually does come before approval in front of the board in the form of a budget.
Well, that's what I'd like to have a discussion about.
Well, it sounds to me like the... Those board members that do want to discuss this, you know, Ms. Sutherland's chiming in, trustee Bargan's chiming in as well. I would be interested in the information that Ms. Bargan does have. I think it sounds like to me that there would be support for that.
I would not support it.
And I don't... I don't understand why everybody's entitled to their vote. That's why there's seven people. But if there is potential violations of bylaws, let's talk about it. Let's figure out if we are, and let's fix it instead of just saying, no, we're not going to. I think, again, that's... We're not doing our job. If we're ignoring it and refusing to speak about it, we're not doing our job.
That's a gross misrepresentation of what's happening here.
How is that?
In no way do I believe that there's a... That we are violating a board policy.
So we should talk about it, and let's determine if we are or not.
But we have talked about it. We've talked about it each time it comes up. And so I... So what we're talking about now is whether or not we want to have another agenda item added to the agenda, and I think that's what we want to focus on.
It's never been an agenda item. It's always been a board... In my board report, and usually when I bring it up, I just get... People just... You just talk to me about it. But I would like to discuss and have it shown to me rather than ignored or talked down to or badgered about it. I'd like to be... It needs to be shown to me why when it clearly states in our bylaws that all hiring, support staff, and contracted people need to come in front of the board for approval. Now we have a system where there's a magical blue book section, $7 million, that where people are hired and given raises, and it doesn't come in front of the board. And the reason is because they're not contractual. That's what the superintendent has said. He's... We've never talked about it as a board. We've never talked about how this can be done. And then our HR person told me last week it was a longstanding practice. Doesn't matter. It's against our policy. We've never had a conversation about it as a board, a debate, and that's what transparency is. We should talk about it, and that's what I'm asking, that we have a discussion about that today.
Well, I'd encourage you to review board... Previous board means? Because we met as a board, it was brought up, it was discussed, and I agree, the majority of this board did not agree with you, and we moved on.
When was this?
Every time you bring it up.
But it's not an agenda item. I think, you know, what we're talking about here is there's one board member at least that thinks there are no violations. There are... There's at least one other board member that thinks there are violations, so why not have a conversation about it? That's simply...
Because we have. Because we have.
We actually have had conversations. We've never had, like member Bargan said...
Not organized conversation on the agenda about that question.
In fact, you had the word violation taken out of the minutes, even though that's what I had said, Mrs. Sutherland or Member Sutherland. So we have not had a discussion about it.
I didn't have anything stricken from minutes, so please don't misrepresent...
I asked to have it my words. My exact wording was violation, and you said it didn't need to be in there.
Okay. And that meeting was recorded, and there was no changes to the recording of that meeting. So I guess the motion is to add a discussion about possible bylaw violations. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion fails 3-3.
Okay. I have another motion. I have another motion. I move that we change the agenda order to allow board members to address the superintendent comments and the community comments. I've always found it odd how our agenda is laid out, being a board meeting, having it be where audience talks and... Or no, board talks, and then our audience speaks, and then we are not allowed to say anything to the board, and then the superintendent speaks, and then the meeting's over. It's always left me feeling like I haven't responded to the community, and it... So what I decided to do was look around and see, is this normal? Because I had remembered how all that's not how it went. And I looked at neighboring districts, and Wild Lake Consolidated, you know, all the districts put their agendas on the website, and they do public comments, superintendent comments, and then board comments, which makes sense. It's a board meeting. The board should end the meeting. Clarkston, public comments, superintendent admin comments, board comments. West Bloomville, public comments, superintendent admin comments, board comments. And then Huron Valley, actually, they do board comments, superintendent admin, public, the board again, the public again, and then good and welfare. So they actually have the board speak... Board commenting twice, the public commenting twice, and the superintendent and the admin at the top. And most of them, that's how it goes, where the superintendent is at the top of the thing because this is a board meeting. So I would like to see the order changed so we can address the community comments as a board, and we are the last speakers. And I would assume superintendent would go first, and then like... Well, let's see. Public, superintendent, and board, like the other districts.
I would support that motion.
I need a clarification on what the motion was?
That we change our agenda order at the end with our comments.
We're on the agenda, though. We're on agenda. We're obviously adding and not adding things to the agenda. So I'm not sure what the motion is regarding the agenda.
Today's agenda, we have... It goes superintendent's report at the end. It goes... Where does it go? Where's the public comments here?
Well, here. First of all, you got board of education.
Board of Education reports, public comments, superintendent's reports. I say that we switch that, or I'm asking, I'm making a motion that we switch that to be public comments, superintendent comments, and board comments.
And the reason I support that, and again, this is nothing that came up today or anything. I think most people up here will know that I've been trying for that for six years. I've always thought it was a bad way to go that we have a chain of command in this district to where you start with the building level principal if you have an issue, and you move up the pyramid, the superintendent, and eventually the last top of that pyramid is the Board of Education. Yet, when people come to address the Board of Education, there's no dialogue or anything back from this board. We kind of look at them, and they look at us, and so many times, they've said, that's it. You're not going to say anything to me. So I am in full support of that because, again, I feel allow the community to come up and speak. Dr. Wonderlick, he can then also address the issue, and then at the end, it allows the board to address the issue or add their comments as well. And I think the public would feel like they're kind of hearing from the board with their concern.
I would support it as well. Oftentimes, people come and speak in public comment, and I'm chasing them out of here to try to catch them as they're running out of here because they've said something that I would like to talk to them about, or I'd like to follow up with them, and they don't always fill out one of these green cards. So if they don't fill out the card, I don't know how to track you down until I see you back out in the community. Oftentimes, I get comments from people that I have questions that I want to ask the board. Well, I always inform them that this is not a format where it's a Q and A, but if you do get up and speak in public comment, I will know what your concern is, what your question could be, and when I speak in my board member report, I would have an opportunity to possibly reflect on some information that I have with regard to your issue. I think the public would appreciate that, and I think the public would appreciate it even more in light of all of what has happened over the past month as we've moved forward with this bullying issue. So I would support it as well, and if you do not support it, I would ask the other board members that don't support it why you don't support that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
There are very real... There are very real reasons why we have an agenda set up the way that it is, and it isn't because we don't want to hear from our community or we don't want to talk to our community, and it certainly isn't because we don't want to engage in dialogue with the community. It has more to do with ensuring that the conversations happen at the right place, at the right level, and that there... And that those conversations are personal. And the other piece of it is that our job as a board is policy, and it is not the day-to-day handling of the district. It is not our job to administrate the district. And so when people come to the board with a concern, we are usually not the people, almost never the people, that can fix their problem. We appreciate hearing the problem. We want to make sure that your problem is resolved, and we follow up to ensure that your problem is resolved. But we... We don't work in the school district. We are not the people to resolve that problem. So it's a very specific... The way that we do it is very specific for a reason so that we can ensure that our administrators are the ones, or the teachers, or the principals, or the superintendent, as the case may be, are the ones that are resolving the issues. It's where the problems are best handled. We don't have the capacity to solve the problems because that's not what we're here for. We're here for policy and oversight.
Well, I respectfully disagree a little bit because we have a chain of command and the last people that we... It's right on our website, and our... What we say is, when you get to the top of the pyramid, you go to the Board of Education. So we offer that out there for the community, and I agree with you. A lot of what we do here could have been handled, you know, through the building level or something like that. All I'm saying is, if they do come up to speak, we then do have an opportunity to say something back. Not that we are going to say, we're going to be there tomorrow to fix it, but we can at least give them an answer, at least reply to them, act like they're being heard. Because, again, so many times in my seven years, that's been such a big complaint when people do come to that podium, and they'll say, that's it. I'm... You're not going to say anything, or... And they're upset about it. So I don't think it's a bad thing to let the community speak first, let Dr. Wonderlick follow up, and he would probably be able to answer it best, but at least allow the board to also answer or give some communication to them because, after all, they're doing what they're supposed to. They're coming to the board. They follow the chain of command.
And if I may add as well...
Excuse me.
I don't mean to interrupt. Mr. Trushen?
Sometimes the... When people come to speak, not anyone that's here or going to speak tonight, but sometimes people aren't truthful. They come and say things that they truly believe, but it may not be what is actually happening. It's what they feel is happening. That needs to be investigated. This gives us that opportunity to... They come invent, which a lot of times, that's what they need to do, but it may not be truthful in what they're seeing. So if I try to fix something or answer someone's question that they're asking tonight, and I find out that they were untruthful to me, I look foolish. I've wasted a lot of time. By giving them that opportunity to get back with the superintendent, to talk to the people in charge, the people in charge of the... A teacher, a student, whoever this person speaking is having an issue with, we have an opportunity to go back and find out what the story is. For me to answer them that night does not work. If someone wants to put on a back-and-forth type show, they're going to try to pull a gotcha on me. That's very easy to do. I am unfamiliar with it, and they're coming up with something I know nothing about. The administration does have a clue. They know what's going on in the buildings. It is something that we do follow up on. I've always tried to... If you speak at this meeting, we will address it at the next meeting if this was resolved this way or this happened there. To... Again, I understand everyone wants to hear that night, how can you help me? How can we... And we ask them to talk to this person. The... And again, they don't tend to run off. Sometimes they do, but in our... At the... Our agenda, I believe it mentions that we will be around after the meeting to talk to anyone. So it's a safety for both the district and ourselves personally. I don't need any help looking foolish. I don't want to be set up, and that's personally why I don't... We're not able to address the issue at that time.
Mr. Torres?
And I don't think the intent is to address the issue at that time. It's just to get the information so that it is noted. I can tell you right now, I wouldn't feel comfortable answering the question, but I do want to have the information so that that way, if there is something pertinent to what was said, that I could talk about that in my board member comments. For example, at the last board meeting, there was a person that came and spoke about gun safety in our schools. That is something that I have particularly had a strong interest in, have worked with with the Michigan Association of School Boards on and with Oakland County School Board Association on. That person left this meeting before I could actually get to them, so I had to spend the next day doing some work to try to get a hold of them and speak to them. In my opinion, we're not trying to answer any questions. We're just trying to get the information that we can, and if we can help them to some extent while we're up here, we can do that. I think a number of us as board members have had a lot of people reach out to us over the past month, and some of the things that we saw was there is a disconnect between the buildings, between central office, and even to our board members because board members weren't being told information. I would like people to come and speak in public comment and give me that information. It would actually make my job easier because then I could follow up with the superintendent and with administration and say, can we follow up on that, like I have been doing with numerous people over the past few weeks? So I fully, wholeheartedly support Ms. Bargan's request or her motion to allow board member comments to be at the end of the agenda and switch it with the superintendent's report.
And we would be...
I...
Sorry. We would be matching...
I get a moment?
Okay.
Yeah. Trying to get everybody's conversation in here.
I thought you were going to end it, so I just wanted to make sure I got my comment in.
I'm not going to end you.
Okay.
I'll come back to you. I'm just saying that... Okay. I've been on the board 26 or 7 years. This agenda has changed. I think the way it sits now clearly respects the board. It respects the staff, and most importantly, it respects the community. Because I have seen the board agenda change, and it really affects the respect that the people come to us. I think every person who comes to this board gets heard. I think every board member gets heard. I think that as long as this meeting runs, board members are allowed to say whatever they want, and they are heard. And so I think that the agenda is set up appropriately and should remain as it's printed.
Okay.
Mrs... Go ahead.
Barcan. Yes. I look at this, and I see our agenda as being different than all the communities around us. I don't know what that reason is, but it's different, and it doesn't seem, just logically, to make sense. Hearing the public first, having the superintendent speak, he can clear up all kinds of things that you were worried about, and then having the board speak. It is a board meeting. It makes sense that we would close the meeting and be able to have a response to our community because I do not like staring at people and not being able to say anything.
I think also, Mr... I'm sorry. Who's next? I'll take you next. Thank you. Mr. Torres, I think, made a great point. I think everybody else up here is making some valid points. Mr. Petrusian made some valid points. else up here is making some valid points. Mr. Petrusia made some valid points. That being said, when we get to board reports, we don't have to answer. We don't have to comment on it. So therefore, if we don't know what to say, or we don't have the proper answer, we don't comment on it. But we also, that gives us the opportunity to comment, to say, we hear you, and like Mr. Torres said, the last meeting, our citizen that came about the guns in, in schools, had he had the opportunity right then and there to speak, to address that person, he could have done it right then and there, that night. And, and anybody else who did not wish to speak, didn't have to do it. So it's a choice, but at least it gives us that option to at least say something to the community. And again, I've seen it for seven years. I know you've been on a lot longer than I have, but I've seen multiple, multiple people come to that podium, and just after they speak, they just look at us and say, that's it, nothing. And, and we basically tell them, it's not a time for, you know, dialogue. And if, if a board member so chooses to add a comment or give something, if they feel comfortable doing that, let them do it. And if they don't, they don't.
I appreciate your comments. I totally understand, I think, where you're coming from. I, my experiences regards to who sat in this chair, there was comments back to whoever spoke publicly. My concern, and I think what you guys are actually asking for, is to be able to have back-and-forth dialogue between the person at your microphone and the person at that microphone.
Nope.
Because in my opinion, that, okay, in my opinion, that's where the frustration, when people leave here frustrated, it's not that they talk and then seven of us just answer, that's it. Their frustration is they have a question and another question, and they don't get an answer. And that sounds like the format you're trying to set up does not solve that frustration. So for that purpose, I still think that this agenda is appropriately set. And I, I'm going to wrap this up, because, I mean, we, at some point, we need to decide we're going to have this on the agenda and actually get to our agenda.
Well, the conversation needs to happen.
And the conversation is happening.
And it is happening, so let's continue it. So it's merely a point of information. Nobody's talking about a Q and A. If somebody's coming up here and asking questions, I don't necessarily have to answer it, but to have the opportunity.
You don't necessarily have to, but you want.
But I have the opportunity to.
Then, then the, then the agenda changes, because it becomes a Q and A.
No, no.
It doesn't become a board report.
No, you're misunderstanding, sir. What it is, is that we're saying is that we can now address it in our board member comments. This isn't a back-and-forth. It doesn't change anything. It doesn't change anything when somebody comes up in public comment. When they say something, and it's something that pertinent to what I could answer or what I have knowledge about, I would now have the opportunity to address it in board member comments. And secondly, it was mentioned that we have policy, we have oversight, is what we do, and we are also representation to the community. And I think a number of us as board members have learned that in a whole nother way over the past month, that we are the representatives of this district, and this community is who we work for. This community is who we serve. And who do they elect? They elect the board. So the board should have the final word. The board should have the opportunity to speak and to interact with the community, and to address any issues that may be brought forth and comment. Ms. Bargan has done some research. I'm friends with numerous people in other school districts across Oakland County through my works with Oakland County School Board Association, and other school districts are doing it differently. We've done it this way for, you're saying, quite some time, but it doesn't mean that it's the right way. If we change it, it would just be for tonight. I would propose, let's change it tonight, let's see how it goes, and if it doesn't go well, we'll go back to the old way.
I would just like to add a quick comment. Nobody disagrees what Member Torres is saying. We work for the community. We work for the community. We're here to listen to you. That's the whole reason we have board meetings, is to set policy and to make sure we always have our finger on the pulse of what's happening in the community. There's been a couple of different comments. I think Bob speaks, speaks, has spoken many times about, and none of us feel comfortable when board, when people come up to talk to us. We want to have that dialogue, but we want to have it after the meeting, because to do it in a board setting can oftentimes, as Mr. Petrusia said, create a back-and-forth. So I recognize that's not what you're asking for. This, to me, feels like an information item that we've already had tonight, and I actually need some time to process it, because I want to go back and look, and I want to understand how this, how this might work. I want to look at what neighboring districts are doing. It's very different than, I think, the concern that Bob has brought up in the past, which, what we're really saying is that the board gets the final word. And so if we could instead treat it as we just had the information item, as, as if we talked about it tonight, and then give us time to process that, and then we can talk about it at our next board meeting, whether we change the agenda in that format. That would just be my recommendation.
Any other comments? All those in favor? opposed? Motion fails 3-3. Moving to our recognition of achievement, Dr. W-